And call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda this evening is to review and approve Minister's car meeting. Uh, if anybody has any thoughts, ideas, or corrections, please. Tell them otherwise I'll cut the motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's all approve. Next item this evening is, I believe, the final last, final plat for left sub-division. And one final public thing?
Yes, so you had actually approved a final plat for left subdivision, and the city council had approved the final plat for left subdivision. Now what's come back to you is the change that just takes one of the larger lots and divides it into two lots. And we wanted to get that approved as the final plat before we go about recording the final subdivision plat for the subdivision. So that is the only change to what you have approved previously.
With that said, I'll open the public meeting. Gentlemen, if you have any thoughts or comments, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give one of your names and phone number or address, pardon.
You didn't say anything.
You don't need to say anything.
Is there anything more?
Right. With that said, I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, uh, do we have anything to add to these pursuits? Any additional thoughts or comments? If there are none, I will accept the motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
I have a motion, can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Motion, I've got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item this evening is a public hearing for ordinance amendments.
And this came out of your last meeting, uh, discussion about where potentially to add rental storage units in other zoning classifications, um, that don't currently allow them. And I think we posted it specifically looking at C three and RC as potential, uh, zoning classifications where the rental storage units would be added.
The storage units is a conditional use now in C three. It would move to permitted, and then...
No, 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 is it...
According to what I have here...
It is conditional in C three? And you're talking about moving it to permitted, okay.
Moving it to permitted, and then making it conditional in RC.
And making it conditional in RC, if you are correct. Thank you, thank you, David. For helping me out there.
So where I see it referred to as storage buildings, is that considered different than rental storage units?
Yeah, actually. Yep, BM.
Yeah, I was looking at C three.
Yeah.
Cause of storage, their eye, their conditional uses.
Yep. Um, let's look at CM and see what it's called there. It seems more specific. Rental storage garages, so it would be number, it would be letter C.
On page 107.
On 107 would be the wording that you would want to specifically... Yep. Add then.
So it's a difference.
There is a difference, there is a difference.
Is there a difference in our definition? If there isn't, then we've identified one more thing to fix.
Storage buildings doesn't even appear in our definition.
Nor rental storage units, doesn't appear in the definitions either, okay. So those are some notes I'll kind of make in the margin for we get that far, for review. And also, the, um, the attorney has a paralegal looking at creating one set of definitions for the entire zoning ordinance instead of having definitions kind of spread throughout. So, um, I will pass that note on to them as well.
Any additional comments?
Probably open the public hearing.
Go ahead and open up the public hearing, same rules as before. Gentlemen, if you have any thoughts for sure, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give one of your name and address.
I'm Chad Standard, my address is 24749 619th Street, Mantleville, Minnesota. Um, the reason why, uh, I am here, I live in Rolling Hills, which is out by the golf course. Um, I'm here to, uh, looking to buy land from Matt Leth, um, which is out by Quick Trip. Um, to my knowledge, the land is zoned commercial. And I'm looking to build storage units. The reason why that I have looked into, or what even brought me to even being here today, is that approximately a year ago, I have stuff. Which I think most of us have stuff, or things that we probably wish that we didn't have, or a place to put it. Anyway, I called the local storage units, which is actually kitty-corner to this building, and I've called them several times. And when I say several times, I don't know if I'd be kidding, they maybe say 10 times. I never, not to say anything excusable about the, the business, as far as talk negative about that, but my point being is that I never returned, received a return phone call. That they're full, just never received a phone call. To add to that point, I called today. Today's the meeting, to see what kind of response would I get today. And today's response was, I'm Chad Standard, I'm looking to add, or to get a rental storage, left my phone number, no return call today. So, I mean, that tells me, you know, one, that they're full. Or maybe they caught wind that I'm looking into building storage units, that would be competition, but I'm not originally from this area, so I am pretty sure that they don't know me. So, that's the reason why that, again, that I looked even into this, is that it seems like there's a need i- in this area. As I got looking into it and talking to a little bit more of my friends and my neighbors in Rolling Hills and even in the Casson area, I find out that several people, and again, I don't know that number, but several in my area are driving to Pine Island. Um, I personally rode with one of my friends to put, um, his camper in Stewartville. Um, I'm not looking to have put campers, I want inside buildings, but again, the point being that they're driving to other towns. Um, other people are driving to Pine Island that I know, you know, friends and family. And that just told me that there's a need for it in Casson. One being as me, as the consumer myself, is that looking into where I could put my stuff. I'd rather not drive to Stewartville or Pine Island, that it'd be convenient if it was right here in town. Which I guess might also to add to that is that if there's consumers here in Casson or Mantleville, or even, uh, Byron or Dodge Center, I've talked to those facilities, they're also full. I've done a, a market study with my banker, as far as is there a need for it in this town? Absolutely, and the town is growing, which I think we'd all agree that Casson's growing, that it's only going to be, keep adding to the demand for it in Casson, Mantleville area. Um, so, um, as of right now, I'm waiting to see as far as the amendment to pass, that if, if it would be to build it to fight the Quick Trip area. So, that's where I'm at with that. Any questions?
How many units?
Um, as of right now, I, I can tell you my, my development plan is that, what, what is the market? I, I personally don't know the market other than there's demand. So, it, what just tells me is that my intentions are, is that I have a purchase agreement on the land for two acres. That my idea is to build one unit, which that would be 40 units, storage units in that one building. If that gets filled, I'd build a second, all the way up to, my total goal would be four buildings, 160 units. Um, as far as the building, to add to that, would be a tractee building, which they're similar to the ones in Byron, and I, I've done a little research on that. Tractee, I believe, is the, the catalog of storage units. I have pictures that if you'd like to see them, but one thing that's very nice about a tractee building is that, say if the building is 30 feet wide, if there's a consumer that wants a 10-foot wide building, or storage space, he goes to 10-foot. Meaning that the building's 30 feet wide, the wall in the middle is adjusting, so it could be 10 by 20, 15, 15. So, as it would get full, I could fill the demand on what's needed. Or it could be just 10 by 30, take the wall out in the middle. So it's two acres, again, with my goal would be 160 units. If this would pass, I can tell you that I would put up a sign, "Storage units coming to Casson." If I get a waiting list or on reservation, 40 units, I'd build one. In a perfect world, if I had a list of 160 standby, I'd build four right away. So that would be my goal, is initially to have four buildings.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for me?
Sure. Don't touch the microphone.
I'm Matt Leth, 302 Fourth Street, Northeast Casson. I have left subdivision up there, um, and, uh, I was interested in the, the storage units too, for the same reason Chad is, I think there's a huge demand. The way residential's going, I, I foresee a lot of multi-families coming everywhere in Casson and other surrounding areas. And with the more multi-families, you're going to need more storage. And then, you know, it's a great place for storage units up where I'm at, it's no residential. And there's, for my sewer situation, which I don't have gravity sewer, it'd be less, if I put storage units on, I don't want it to pump as much. So, for me, it's, it's, would be great to have Chad up there, storage units. Any questions for me?
Alright.
Thanks, man.
Go ahead and close the public hearing.
I don't need storage units at Madison. I'm good. Someday, yeah.
We will close the public hearing.
You don't have to sell me, I know the need. Just moving from northeast to northwest, we use two storage units. I, I know, and they aren't that easy to find. And it'd be nicer to have one right here that had enough to Byron, Rochester, Stewartville, wherever.
Is there another way to make this happen besides ordinance amendment? There is no conditional use mechanism, there's nothing in the code that allows us to do it.
So it's not a conditional use in C three?
Yeah, I think that's the way, but the wording does not say specifically.
Conditional use.
Yeah, it allows for storage buildings, but not for rental.
So I think that was, wasn't that part of the discussion with the Radell property? That their C three wanted to go to CM because they want to do storage units, self-storage? So, I'm just going off that, and that interpretation would be that it's not a conditional use in C three. But there's different interpretation of the area.
Well, it would, it needs to be clarified one way or the other, I think, so I think that's a good point.
Well, plus the Radell property was trying to spot zone, just a couple of, just pour that in that whole area. No, I think it's something that's needed, period, like Lonnie said, I think we should, you know, you have the intent of saying we're going to go forward with this to, to have that done, but get the terminology between storage building, storage garage, storage facility, storage site.
Rental storage.
Rental storage units, yeah, I think that's very specific, too.
Do any of you guys have an issue with it? I mean, if you do, I'd like to hear.
I, I don't in the C three. I think it should be a permitted use. Uh, in the RC, where we also discussed, I think it should be a condition, but I think some of the conditions should be the buffering, uh, the number of units, and the size of the units. Just so you limit the amount of traffic, and the type of traffic that's going into those types of buildings.
Well, I don't mind, but on the conditional use permit, we can put all that stuff in that type of application. Plus, we've got 50% land coverage that we have to abide by in RC. So, that's going to restrict them right there on putting, you know, units in also, so... And that's just some of the guys that haven't been able, Duane, I've done some things that were, conditional use means you can put conditions on it that they have to abide by, like, um, I think there's a church, I think, up in Northwest where I had to make, make sure that their lights weren't, you know, that have light pollution in the...
Part of you.
You know, certain things that you guys, if you, you know, can put conditions on, like, Nick said, the buffering, aburn, pine trees.
Yeah, we went through that with the Erdman expansion.
Yeah.
The concern I have of putting it in RC is that, um, self-storage building like that, you need a car, right? You need a car to get there to unload stuff or load stuff up, you're not walking there. So it's really designed and oriented to the automobile, not pedestrian oriented. So I think putting it in the RC zone, it's going to, um, decrease that neighborhood walkability, that some of the RC zone has. And especially those areas that are part of sort of the original plot of the city, you know, sort of historic downtown area. I think, I think it would be, um, not appropriate in those locations.
I'm not quite sure I agree, considering all the others that are permitted. You know, the, the other businesses that are permitted in there, mortuaries are permitted in there. Uh, there's a number of other conditions that probably have more traffic volume than these storage buildings would have, that are permitted at, uh, RCs. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand what, what you want, but I think you have to take it in the context of the other permitted uses.
But even still, for those permitted uses, um, the way those uses actually take form in their building, they're at pedestrian scale.
Yeah.
So, whereas self-storage is not necessarily oriented to that mode of traffic, so...
I'm just trying to think of where RC, where we would run into an issue where somebody would actually be putting them up, that would cause that situation.
Well, I think the economics of that area in downtown would prevent it, or just to make everything pencil out, to make it work, you'd have to buy that property in sort of the old part of town, and take down whatever structure's there, to put up something new, and if you're limited on space, and so, it may be, the economics may be self-regulated, or in a way.
Right, right.
But still, adding it as a allowable use, even if it is conditional, there's a possibility that you could have self-storage units in, along First Street.
North on your side, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then down on, east of you, down there on the corner where, um, Mrs. Robertson house, that's what I refer, referred to back in the day, and we allowed them a, what was it, a fence right on the, on the property line. Basically, the discussion was is that they were a buffer for the residences to the north of them. So they didn't really get the chance to use their residence the way everybody else did, with having a buffer next to where T and K is, and the body shop, and they also, we went ahead and gave them a conditional use to put this, their own personal buffer up, you know, because where, like where you're at, you know, you see all that traffic, where, you know, we wanted them to be able to enjoy the, the house that they purchased or whatever else. So, and that's like I said, that's where the conditional use permit comes in, to where the conditions, what everybody sets here, you know, they may not like them, and, you know, it's no different than the old, uh, DCI building, you know, or back from the old days, I don't know if they, uh, got anything out of that to, to deal with, use it the way they want to, or we thought they would, uh, where we would go with that, you know, so, depending on what people set here, might determine if really what, if it was even happening, so...
I just think the nature of the use of it is not conducive for the neighborhood zone. I mean, I can tell you, I, I live right next to a lot of commercial, but, I mean, part of the benefit of that is that when I'm not home, someone's there at the business, so there's kind of that eyes on the street. Because I know I've, um, you know, I've seen stuff like, you know, where I've had to call the, call the police, because like the alarm is going off across the street, at Cam Telecom, and so, you know, I'm watching out on their property, just like I would think that, you know, they'd be neighborly, if they saw something going on at my place, you know, that they would call the police, saying...
They're moving today, we didn't know that.
Yeah. You know, but, but that kind of helps everybody out, you know, there's, there's a safety aspect that, that kind of comes into play and helps itself out, yeah, and it makes the use scenario. Um, so, with self-storage that's basically vacant most of the day, you lose that benefit.
So what do we need to do?
I, I mean, I understand what you're saying there, but I, I think that, uh, my opinion is that, uh, we need to move forward, I think, with what I see with the RC areas that we have as minimal. I do believe that if there were to happen something up in that area, it would, the cost-effectiveness to be able to put a mini-storage up, to buy a property, demo houses, probably would never see it happen up there, much else if it would be something the city would want to see. I think, I think I would like to move forward with this, but get the terminology down between what we're going to call everything, between, and get it in the ordinance at the same time. If we just go and name it something now, we're just dealing with that later. So...
I think you're right, I think the terminology probably is sort of the first step. Because if it's a conditional use allowed in C three, maybe we don't need to do anything. And then, because the, the, uh, what's being presented here tonight, it's already in a C three zone, as they asked for it, so it could be done through a conditional use process without adding as permitted, so it's already, that's already placed, if that's how it's defined. If that's not how it's defined, then that's something we could, we could look at, kind of what we're discussing. So, maybe that's the first step, is to get that defined.
Define how we want.
Yeah.
Proceed, I mean, and then the same thing with the definitions, you can still be putting it with the RC as a conditional use permit, but how it's defined depends upon what you could put in there, you know, versus a storage facility versus a storage shed, you know, so...
Well, I, I know like Rochester doesn't, they have a residential commercial district, I believe they're B five, so, and they don't have self-storage in there, they allow it in their M one, so manufacturing, like, factories, um, and B four, which is sort of the more contentious commercial area. For their residential commercials, they don't allow some storage. What is that, down where, uh, Spading's down in that area?
Shawn's?
Yeah, Shawn's. I was, I forget, I looked, I was talking about that last time.
The car or scene?
Yeah, kind of down in there, on Second.
Second and...
I think it's RC. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I think, when, when the land, when the ord zoning was set, RC was purposely selected to make sure that they became, uh, uh, conforming use.
Right, it's RC.
We were just talking about that last time.
Are we able to, at today's meeting, just go ahead and say conditional use for C three, though, and their purpose, do you not? Law, right? Pending definitions.
Right, that's the main thing, that's...
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, when I read the, um, conditional use in C three, I don't interpret that to be rental unit necessarily, but it would be storage for a business, or...
So it's more like a warehouse?
Yes, yes. You could, you could make a motion to add rental storage units to the conditional uses in C three, if that's the way you wanted to go. And then I can take that to counsel, so that by your next meeting, you could actually look at a conditional use permit.
Okay.
If, if that's what you're thinking you'd like to be able to do.
It is what I'm thinking. So, do I need the motion then?
Sure.
Sure, to bring it up, to allow, uh, rental storage units as part of conditional use for C three.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will take that change to the council on Wednesday, um, so they're... So then, pending the outcome of the council meeting Wednesday, Wednesday night is fixed here, then, um, you'll know how to proceed.
Okay. So is that this Sunday?
Yeah, yeah, in two days. Two days.
Alright, very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Ordinance discussion, please come prepared, remember comments of sections 150 and 151.
And then maybe we can talk about how big a chunk you think we could tackle next meeting? Fight it, you know, fight off sections we can do. So when I reviewed this, I primarily looked at it from the point of, um, is the statute, state statute reference correct? Um, I changed all the references to resolution of the city council to ordinance, um, because that's where the fee schedules are set. And then just, uh, a note to clear up the penalties at the end, it says a violation of 150.01 to 150.07, but actually, the section is bigger perhaps than it was at the time that the penalty section was put in place, because there are penalties referred to in more than just those, um, seven sections. So, John, I kind of looked at it more, you know, from kind of the technical point of view, but perhaps you have some comments that are more related to the actual application? You should move over to that.
I forgive my ignorance, but who is our building official?
Uh, that would be Jay Krueger with CMS, actually, anyone that, any of the inspectors with CMS can do an inspection for us, but... Uh, that would be Jay Krueger with CMS, actually, anyone that, any of the inspectors with CMS can do an inspection for us, but Jay is our.
Mostly Jay, right?
Jay is right, is our contact person at CMS.
We, we've been officially appointed, haven't we?
Uh, is that part of the annual appointment?
Yes, that's part of the annual appointment in January, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it in there? I don't remember, I don't even.
You know, I don't know if it was this year, I know it was last year.
I just read that and I, no reality, I don't remember it for the last three times.
Because we appoint the, the paper and the building.
Right.
Maybe it wasn't that time.
All that stuff, it's just one big list.
List, yeah, it's just one, like one list that comes around every time. We can verify, it, it, it's Jay Krueger.
I don't think we're gonna go with anybody else anyway.
So I was looking at that, uh, section one fifty point oh one, the adoption, that referenced to Minnesota statute sixteen B.
Yes.
Is that correct?
No.
Okay, that's right.
Um, no, it's not, it's actually, let's see, I did make myself a note there somewhere, it's like one thirty-six.
Oh, okay.
Oh, three.
Twenty-six B.
It is that three twenty-six, yeah. Yeah, so I did look at that, and that, that is no longer correct.
I think that's item C also in that.
Um, yes, item C, it's, yes, it's three twenty-six B one ninety-four for section C.
Yeah.
Um, and then I verified that it is correct in one fifty point oh two. So that kind of tells us when that section was added.
So who is on the board of the vehicles?
Um, I think that would be the city council, it's not, they, that's somewhere, is that the city?
Two members of the city council.
City council and a third member appointed by the council from the public, yeah.
Does that need to be appointed annually at the same time?
I think it's appointed at the time that there's an appeal.
As needed, baby. I don't think we've ever needed it yet.
Something I had on one fifty point oh four, the removal and restoration, talks about if the building's unsafe, it needs to be taken down, but we don't have a section there for who pays for that, so, and we have another section later on that talks about.
Um, I think though, let's see, one of these statute provisions though does cover that.
Okay.
Um, oh, so that's in paragraph C under permits and fees, um, where it says the fee per demolition, let's see, no, Shelby said. Um, um, if the governing body shall cause the building to be properly secured and the cost thereof may be charged against the real estate. Hmm.
During the demolition process, not for?
Not for, okay, so we need to clarify for both boarding it up and for demolishing it. Okay.
So let's say like if a tornado came through and buildings were damaged, so maybe we can say.
Okay, for securing for, uh, for the actual demolition. Thank you.
I have other notes if you want to go through my.
Sure.
Continue.
Okay.
I'll just go around the.
All right.
Yeah.
So in that same section, one fifty point oh four, item B, talks about fifty percent of the value that's damaged and if more than fifty percent of the value, then you gotta basically meet current code. Um, and I was just wondering how that value is determined, if that's based off of, you know, last assessed value.
I think, I take it to mean that that would also be part of the inspection by the building official? I was like, oh, the building official would determine if.
And some of these may not need to be necessarily in ordinance, but this could be policy.
Sometimes though, it's really helpful to have everything in the same place. So, okay, so, um, so just to clarify who is determining the value. Okay.
Um, one fifty oh five, part A, uh, has no buildings to be erected, it's just maybe you have no building or structure. Sometimes it's not a habitable building that gets permitted.
Okay.
And then the second part of that first sentence has, uh, can't be altered, moved until permits obtained, but from the building official stating that dwelling, well, that just kind of limits it to residential construction.
Okay.
So I think we maybe change dwelling to building or structure, and so she's kind of consistent with her language.
Right.
And maybe that's part of the definitions and like we talked about moving all the definitions out to its own chapter at the beginning.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Uh, part B, under that same section, item one, uh, application for the building permits we made to the administrator on blank forms, be furnished to the city by the, city administrator. Um, I don't know why any blank forms, it sounds like there's a story behind that somewhere.
Maybe, we'll just say on forms, how about that?
Yeah, I just kind of.
On forms, to be furnished.
Yeah, just made on forms, by the city administrator.
Okay.
And then each application for permit to instruct or alter a building, again, add or structure. And maybe we can take care of that in definition and say, 'cause I know there is another definition here later that says building means structure itself.
Yeah, yeah, that's in a strange kind of set off by itself. Building or structure shall mean, yes, exactly.
So it might be.
But then that's saying building or structure should be any thing.
That's for small buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
So, which is.
Also shack's closet, I know it gets. Okay.
So she'll be accompanied by plans drawn to scale and dimensions and, um, maybe that could stick out and I'm not really sure, good wording there, but I kind of came up with like proper information is required for permit issuance. I mean, maybe it's a drawing, but if you're getting a permit to say rebrand your house, probably maybe don't need a drawing for that.
You don't require a drawing for that.
Yeah.
There, there's separate permits, so.
But this doesn't necessarily spell that out, does it? Okay.
That's just a broad way to say as required.
Okay.
Permit issuance, and maybe that's something that's supposed to be on a permit form, it's just a checkbox or, I, I don't know, exactly.
Okay.
Um, and then has the permit expire, uh, works not commenced within one year? Put that out there if you want to change that to six months, 'cause later on in the extension, the next paragraph, the building official can extend it for another six months, for a hundred and eighty days. So, I don't know how everybody feels about that. And then I just kind of took out those last couple sentences in that paragraph B, about the permit being reissued after expiration.
Yeah.
Fee required and all that, because in part two, so in one fifty oh five B two, it goes into how things get, how permit gets reissued. So maybe I think we may be doubling up there.
Okay.
Or it could be moved into that paragraph, if you consolidate it in there. I can give you my notes afterwards.
Okay, yeah.
You can get all my.
Okay, okay. But thinking about a hundred and eighty days on the expiration and the extension. So nothing's hanging out there for a year.
Right.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Just if I bring it up for, for suggestion, I think most, most municipalities have about a hundred and eighty days for a permit that's valid, and then you can reissue it, that way it's not just sitting out there. I know we've got other stuff, like with our, um, like our conditional use, and that runs for a year, where then it may be rescinded. So maybe that's why this is a year to link up with that.
Well, it seems to be, it says, it says may be extended for a hundred and eighty days, and then it says the building permit shall be extended for additional period of one year. So it's inconsistent within the same paragraph already.
The only problem with keeping it at six months, say somebody goes to build something late in the fall, weather gets bad, they don't get going again until May, June, their six months is expired, they have to go back in, renew it?
We'd have to ask for an extension.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with a year, I mean, I think back in the day, pretty much everything was a year.
Everything was a year.
I know that the electoral permits.
I get what you're saying, but.
I know like our electoral permits, they got six months, but that was more of a fee restructure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We've never been very, um, proactive on it, well, and we don't know when they're having inspections done, so CMS has usually taken the ball on this one, and they send out letters saying, you haven't called, you don't burn inspection, are you still working on it? Is it done? You know, you need to call us or we're gonna expire it, and they've, they've been the ones who expire it. And some permits, you know, somebody hammers a nail once a month, and they're like, it's a work in progress, so it's been open for a while. So, you know, I, CMS has usually taken.
The lead.
The lead on this, and then they'll say, well, we expired this, because we sent the letters, they didn't respond, so we're expiring. And then they'll give me a list of how, or what ones they expired.
So the building permit, basically it's, you have to complete it within a year, it doesn't tell you when to start.
No, it says, if it's not commenced within one year, it doesn't say it's completed within one year.
So if it doesn't start, it could be laying down the first board, as you said, uh, within a year, then, then number two tells you you can extend it to eighteen months by extending the additional hundred and eighty days.
And they've never actually, it's never been formal, a, a formal extension, you know, they just never, they just didn't expire it then. If somebody says, you know, okay, I need a framing now, and they're still working on it, it could be another, you know, six months before they get another inspection or something.
Doesn't the inspection cards say that it must be completed in a year?
Okay.
I think it does.
I think it does, but I, I have no idea as to when they're getting any inspections, so that's why CMS has always taken the lead on this.
In all my own experience, when I built my deck, you know, I got it all up, I just didn't make that final call for the final inspection, until I got the letter saying, you know, your permit is about up, you know, do you want this done?
Yep, when I built that detached garage, Jay, you know, hand being carried, and I'm sure it says must be completed within a year, but he called. He said, you about ready for that final inspection?
Yeah, and if you said no, you know, I'm still working on it, they'll just, they'll just leave it hang open, so.
No, I had to say, I'll get everything out of the shed so you can look at it.
But I mean, if you weren't done, they, they don't.
Yep.
It hasn't been formally extended, they just, they'll put you on his next round of calls, you know, in a couple months.
So maybe I should talk today about how expensive work.
Yeah, you can, because we, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, going on from that, so one fifty oh five B two, we talked about extensions.
Right.
And maybe we clean that up a little bit.
Yeah.
And, uh, I had the building official make extend the time for action by the permit for a period not exceeding a hundred and eighty days upon written request by the permit. Uh, and I had like holding an unexpired permit, um, for good and satisfactory reasons, that was kind of back in the previous.
Okay.
Paragraph.
Right.
It's kind of.
I'll work with Jay on the, how about I work with Jay about how that actually works?
And I guess the question I had is why building permits are not transferable?
I, I did make that question too, but Lonnie brought up a good point, I'll let him.
My point was, somebody else buys your property, you have building permits started to build a deck.
Yeah.
They assume they can change things midstream, whereas if they're required to resubmit a permit, they have to resubmit their own drawings the way they're going to build it. If somebody, the previous owner has already submitted, it's not saying they're gonna stick to that. No, I, I may be wrong, but I just, I've kind of seen it happen before, that, that was my own.
Yeah, I agree, and I think there's, I know probably at least two or three instances where permits are, decks line up without the permit.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
That happens?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you go buy the house on Friday, and then you go buy it on Monday, and all of a sudden this deck is there, you, you know pretty well that, uh, it just didn't get permitted. So that's, you know, I, just to backtrack a little bit, when we talk about, um, one fifty oh five, item A, we talk about permit fee, if they, um, they're required to have a permit fee, and shall be sent by council. If a deck is discovered that wasn't permitted, there ought to be a penalty, they shouldn't just pay the fee.
Yes, I agree, I too.
And are you better off levying a fee, or are you better off going to the current homeowner and saying, listen to the guys?
Yeah, tear it down.
You, you can either fix exactly what we tell you to fix, or you're tearing it down. And then that way the dollars are going towards correcting the problem as opposed to punishing the other. I guess it's more of a philosophical debate than.
I got one for you, how about you got a homeowner that, uh, talked to somebody out of city hall, probably misunderstood versus repair or rebuild? Here's mine.
Well, that's why CMS is in there, right, they're.
Which they talked to. It was me. 'Cause at one point in time, our deck was front porch was pretty bad, and at one point in time, I think Lynn and I were talking about it a couple years ago or something, about how a permit goes when you get a permit, maybe it was on my back step or something, but, and I remember saying something about being a repairer, they don't really require the permit, so my thoughts, I'm, you know, I'm not taking the whole thing down, I'm just taking the deck off. Well, that was beyond that, basically like that, whatever, beyond just a repair, basically, Jay explained that, and I'm not really, I'm repairing, but I'm not really repairing. You know, I'm actually rebuilding, so, what do you would do in that instance?
That, that's a good opportunity for the penalty, but.
We were just talking.
Good thing I already did it.
I knew.
I have the permit.
You were just removing the deck.
Right, right.
So that isn't structural.
Well, no, actually, I did take the, the beam, I took beams off.
Oh, now we're hearing it all.
I, I was on it.
You know, if you're, you're only taking a couple boards, there's a couple cracked boards, you can replace those boards.
Yeah, right.
But yeah, once you start.
We got into the skeleton.
I didn't take all of them. Seventy-five percent, the roof was still there, that was it, and the block. So yeah, I mean, it was one of those things that I, I didn't, in sitting here, it's just like what we talked about, I, I know it was something brought up about being a repairer, didn't need to do a permit on it, so my idea of being a repairer, not that I was trying to skate on forty-five dollar permit, it was more just an idea that it was a repair for me, that it, you know, wasn't definitely the roof or any of the block or anything, I'd just take them, choice out, put new decking on it. So when I called Jay, he explained to me, and I said, all right, so come out, and Lynn to help me draw a map, and Jay signed off on it and cut the check, and six months later, we're putting the deck on. So.
See, I, I always found it better living across from Jay, wait till a really hot day when he wants to get in, and have, showing something, yeah, it's whatever.
We're supposed to be enforcing rules.
That's why he got put on the media.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, so.
Oh, let's keep going. Uh, let's see. Um, that's kind of all I have for that section, I think, uh, so over to one fifty dot two zero. That's kind of all I have for that section, I think. So over to one fifty dot two zero, and what about small buildings?
Yeah.
One fifty two zero A, there's a definition, we kind of talked about that a little bit. Maybe say like small building or structure, because it says building or structure, that is one that's more than two hundred square feet or cubical dimension less than three thousand cubic feet. I think, I think it's meaning to say small buildings, because it's in that section.
Okay.
If we move definitions out, we might need two separate ones, one for bigger buildings and one for smaller buildings. And the smaller buildings, anything under two hundred, you don't need anything for, there's no permits or anything required.
For under two hundred.
Under two hundred. What would we change on that, on that square footage on that one?
It is two hundred square feet now.
It is two hundred.
That's the new.
I remember. What was, it used to be?
Hundred twenty.
One twenty.
And then I'll kind of circle back on that one, having had phone calls about sheds and fences being in drainage easements or on utility easements, but maybe even requiring a zoning permit for people who are gonna do things that don't need a building permit, just so we can say to them, you cannot obstruct, obstruct a drainage easement.
Gas line.
Gas line. Even over an electric, or even over the electric utility, because like I said to Lonnie, it's, yeah, shed, you know, people want to say they're temporary, but once you fill and pull it up, they're not going anywhere. And then if there needs to be utility work, or where it would be nice to have that extra five feet of that utility easement to get something done, then how do you get a storage shed made of?
Pay it over? That's what the city has, they have the right.
People, people are told.
Yeah, they're told, but it leaves.
And when they put up fences, that you can put them on the property line, however, we suggest you stay off your easement. You have to be able to maintain your fence from your property, so to leave at least a lawnmowers with. And if you put it on the easement, you are taking a chance that if we need to get a big truck in there, you can lose your fence.
Right, but they're told, but this way they would actually have it in writing, and it wouldn't be, oh, I didn't understand that, or it wasn't clear.
Can I ask a question? But I don't want to throw this all off. Remember the issue that we were having in northeast with drainage? Was there actually a drainage easement on the back of that property?
Well, I think what they got at that, was that mainly that burn was causing that issue.
Right, that, that's what they said, but, you know, it was on Blaine's property.
On the back of that subdivision.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there, there was a drainage easement back there.
There was a drainage easement.
Yeah, there is a drainage easement back there, but they were building their fire pits and putting their sheds in it.
Here's my question. If there is a drainage easement, is there a penalty for building, putting stuff up or anything in that easement? Or are they just notified and said, you can't do that, or is there a procedure in this town?
No, I'm gonna say.
For structure, I think it's.
I'm gonna say no, because just about every fence in Tassan is in a drainage easement.
Say, do we actually have a drainage easement, or is it a utility?
Utility easement.
Well, we have utility easements, but we also have, there are lots of drainage easements.
Because there's, most of these flats don't have drainage easement signs. I know we had where, I can't think of the street, but Andy Kelly, he used to live up by the Lutheran Church, some, one of the neighbors changed the swales in their yard, and basically made it run over Knowles. You might have been here on that one.
Uh, no, I, I don't know if I was, but I remember the discussion.
But they changed the.
I think it was, I was counsel at that time.
Yeah, they had changed the swales, and everything was running through Knowles backyard. And basically, I think Andy would have had to take, and he didn't really care where his was, but they basically would come down to is it's a personal matter that's held at the county courthouse, when you change your drainage on your property.
But we do have, we have plenty of subdivisions with drainage easements, because just about every time I or Brandon or Charlie gets a call, we pull it out, and sure enough, you know, folks are complaining about their backyard's wet or.
So, so that leads to, as you were saying, Coy, if somebody in that northeast section is having trouble with drain, drainage on their lot, because of their downstream neighbor building something, they basically need to take it to court.
Yes, it came out of that. Yeah, because I mean, on your general development plans, they have all of your elevations of drainage on there. You know, so that's how they put these properties in there, to get them to drain.
Right.
You know, to that drainage pond, you know, retention pond. So, but once the house is on the bill, the property sold, that's now the owner, the people's property, and they, I don't think back then there was a precedent set anywhere that it's a, it's their property. If they change the drainage on it, it comes down to a court matter between the two properties or ten properties, whatever it is. So.
They've had that another change of two, or people are building up next to their house, their basement floods, so now they, they put in this system and they dig out and they, they burn it up next to their house, and now it runs off into the neighbor's property. And people have called, and it's like, you know, that's between you and the neighbors, because when it was built, it was built the way, you know, they did it, everything the way they want to, they should.
We have been able to, the ordinance doesn't address like some type of discharge, so we didn't tell somebody, yeah, can't go straight out your house into your neighbor's backyard, you know, you do have to get it out to the street. But if it's that way, we can.
My neighbor did, so I bought a pipe to pipe it down the curb. So I didn't have to walk through it.
If you wanted to do a zoning certificate for fences and sheds and stuff that didn't, didn't require a permit, you know, you, it could be just a certificate that they have to come in and get that we could record who it was and what they were building or putting up.
I, I don't want to cause more.
I was gonna say, that's just a lot, you know, it's, it's a lot more paperwork.
This really came from Brandon. I mean, it really came from Brandon in response to, you know, complaints that we got about water, drainage primarily, and, and just, you know, what is the understanding about what you can? If you're gonna put something in that easement, you need to understand that you can't call us and complain then when the water stays inside your fence.
I was just, I guess my point was, a young couple goes and buys a new house, northwest, northeast, whatever, how many of them even understand what a drainage easement even is? Half of them don't realize that they have a utility easement.
Utility easement, right. So at least if you need to come in, you get something that says to you, you know, there's a five foot utility easement all around your lot, there's a ten foot drainage easement on the back of your lot, there's.
There's a fifty foot gas line easement.
That's far, it's costly.
And we don't need to be disclosed, it's in the paperwork associated, telling you at home.
Right.
We've had people in here saying, how was I supposed to know about that?
Yeah.
A little bit of homework, you gotta show up and ask.
That's, that's, that's a lot more. Not, not, that, I mean, it can be done, it's just, that's a lot more work.
I'm not saying I need to.
We're gonna have to do a, a certificate that says you have this around your house, and you have this, and then we have to do the research on each property, because not every property is, is as easy as the new, the new builds. You know, some people in the old part of town now want to put a fence up, and I have to go through old. I mean, it could take some time, too.
We'll look into that.
It could be time intense, and then it's the, it's the making it, and then we need to keep a record of it. So they have to be numbered, and I don't know if you want follow up to make sure they, and who's gonna follow it up, making sure they didn't put it in the easement.
Right. No, I was just curious, in case something comes up again, like happened there, what really is? There is really no fine or anything for them doing that, it's they have to go neighbor to neighbor in court.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we tell people about their trees too, because somebody's calling, complaining that the neighbor's maple tree is dropping all those little twirly birds into their gutters.
Really?
I mean, these are, these are serious things we're getting. We're gonna be curious.
You might be able to write a book for.
The cottonwood tree is coming down into all the cotton, it's coming down into their yard.
I don't know if any of this conversation was prohibited us to be proactive about adding a sentence in the building ordinance, about, you know, restricting building on easements.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, if it does go to court, and we, there is an official document that's got that language in it, it certainly strengthens the case of the complaint.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to police it.
Okay.
But I think having a sentence in there would be.
All right.
Advisory.
Okay, I made that note.
It might be kind of, well, what, what's included, I guess, in it? So like, if someone wants to, you know, patio kit, put out papers in the easement, is that something that would not be allowed?
Well, they would just have to understand that that could be disrupted, and the city's not gonna pay to put it back if it had to be disrupted in order to access the utility.
Right, well, it'd be something where, you know, you may get put in there for a twenty-four hour notice from the city, unless it's the middle of the night, you know.
Emergency.
Emergency, you're subject to just having your stuff removed as much, you know, as decently as possible by city workers so they get their work done. I mean, and then you'd have to take care of it after that, but, you know, I mean, if there's something that, say, we'll give you twenty-four hour notice, if not, city will remove it at will, and deal with it. So.
I think moving away from having a certificate or something like that, because it's a lot of extra work, if it's extra work, then there probably needs to be a fee involved to offset that extra workload. And then, you know, there's, how do you enforce it? Because then people go like, well, I don't want to pay a fee because this doesn't even need a permit anyway.
Well, and this, this notice here is something to be, I don't know, like it's talk smart computers, cut base in the spring and put in a newsletter, whatever, that goes off the bill, big old letters, you know, help people get ready to put up fences and patios or whatever else, just put a little statement out in the spring or a couple of times in that letter, it gets out. That way we do our due diligence to make sure they're notified and everybody's built.
Okay, sorry for taking you down that, there on the other, under two hundred. Okay, all right. So we were on the definition, maybe a small building or structure.
Yep, that, that's all I had. I had a, a note kind of in there where it says more than two hundred square feet, if you want to do but less than something, but then it says cubical dimension less than three thousand cubic feet.
Cubic feet, make it the feet, feet, yeah.
If you want to do just by area, but the cubic value limits it to volume, so also limits it height.
Oh, wow.
Right, because we did have that issue, like there was something down on Thirteenth Avenue. It got built like a two-story storage shed, but its square footage was below. They put two levels on it, and the neighbors, it stirred up a lot of trouble with the neighbors, a few years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, go different style in your house, you got two floors in your house, you got square footage.
So, I know there's some places, or, just trying to think if I ran into this, in Dodge Center, I think, they had to change the garage for the little shed that they did. There was something in there, they must have had something, the builder that was building the little shed caught it, and said he couldn't do it, and they had to, because he, he, these guys had a pitch on the roof that was just vertical. But does that apply to anything in this? I mean, if we, we got our cubic feet, so if we're at, if we're at two hundred, would require a lot of that for me.
Yeah, so it, so I think that what you might be referring to is that, like a secondary building, that the roof line of the, of a secondary structure can't exceed the roof heights of the primary structure, or something like that.
Unless there's something like that.
Yeah, I have seen that before.
Not that, we, we would put that in there, but it was just the idea of what you touched on about size. You know, you have a two hundred square foot base.
Right, so how far off can you go, right?
At three thousand cubic feet, that'd be roughly fifteen.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet. But I'm, I'm assuming the roof would have a pitch to it, so, you know, you'd have to calculate what the cubic feet.
And we might keep that in mind for when we are getting to primary and secondary structures too. Do you think, I mean, I've had applications in other cities come in where somebody had a one-story home, but the garage was gonna be two stories. Well, if it says that the secondary structure can't exceed the height of the primary structure, then that limits them on adding storage above the garage or whatever.
Right. And there we get into, that's a bigger game right there, because we're in with permits there. The, the one that I was referring to is something that was small.
Oh, small, right.
You know, right, they were still, it was, was less than two hundred back then, but they just went straight up there. I remember it caused the issues.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we could change that one word in there from more than two hundred square feet, which is or cubical dimension, maybe it should and. More than two hundred square feet and a cubical dimension of less than three thousand cubic feet.
That would rearrange it.
Then that would, that makes it a small building.
Okay, okay.
If it's or, you could have two thousand square feet.
I would have a little mini tablet, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I really wasn't sure what to do with one fifty dot two one, because it seems like there's some repetition in there from what we said before about stuff needs a permit. You know, establishing use within a city for residence purposes in any structure or equipment is granted without person obtaining a permit. I think we kind of said some of that back here, that you need a permit for any building or structure.
Yeah, that, that is really interesting, because that threw me off, because I was thinking, it says also shaft, quantity converted box cars, car trailer semi trucks removable, is it saying that those could be permitted for residential purpose?
Scissor, they could be used for residential purposes in the city.
Right.
It's a cook car.
These take out to the field during harvest time, feed the hand, butter the hand.
Okay, cook cars. Also, so it's almost implying as though you could have a residential structure.
Well, once you guys watch that show, they make tiny houses out of storage containers.
My wife wants a tiny house.
She's gonna have to get a permit.
Build her a tiny house.
Sheldon, go to your tiny house.
She kicks me out of the shop, but I don't care.
Right. But, I mean, I think that, like, then raises a whole other question, it's like, I just, I talked to Jay about that. Is there a minimum size that's considered a resident under street building code or something?
Yeah, they're starting to get pretty popular.
Yeah.
You've seen anything here, but there are minimum dimensions for the habitable space.
Okay.
Generally seven feet.
Okay, I'll check with Jay.
In any dimension, in any direction, so ceiling or.
Okay.
And there's requirements for veterans.
Okay. So maybe that would eliminate a lot of those, if I talk to Jay, and it seems like it's just totally out of line with state building codes. And then that would go into those other paragraphs, too, I mean, to clear that, clear that all up.
Yeah, because it, it goes in there, like one fifty two one, part B, talks about an occupancy permit. Like a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
Is that what it's referring to?
That's what I took as meant, occupancy permit, and then it again refers to that, those smaller structures. I was, it was in the same section of small buildings and the like.
It could be consolidated or. It could be consolidated or.
I wasn't really quite sure.
Okay, okay, I'll talk to Jay about that question.
Uh, one fifty point three six, which is in the section about trailers. Uh, about parking and use on public streets and grounds. First sentence there, no automobile trailer should be used or occupied as living or sleeping quarters going on the public streets, alleys, public grounds in the city except for loading and unloading purposes. I was probably getting, take that out, like, do you even need that in there for loading and unloading purposes?
Right.
Because I don't even know how you would even enforce that or know that.
Yeah, that's more a parking issue, which I think we do talk about. You could park it on the street to load it or unload it, but you can't park it on the street, like, forever or overnight or something like that, okay?
So may, maybe, maybe it does make this day, I don't know.
Well, maybe just that last one, about parking, just in accordance with the parking ordinance. And I think the parking ordinance gives them the opportunity to unload it from the street.
But, yeah, that could clean it up, that way all parking regulations are in the parking section.
Okay.
Um, could potentially maybe combine section one fifty point three seven about use or occupancy on private property and one fifty point three eight about the, you gotta have sewer and water.
Toilet.
Facilities. Um, so basically, one fifty point three seven says you can have the automobile trailer and use it for sleeping quarters.
Three days.
For a maximum of three days in any year.
Okay.
On private property. I don't know how everybody feels about that time limit or if that's something to look at.
What, what are you gonna get in that?
That you could combine that, you could combine those two sections together. Because the first part of one fifty point three eight says no automobile trailer should be used or occupied as living, sleeping quarters or parked on public or private premises in the city unless, and that talks about need sewer, water and toilet. So maybe combine those into one and say you can use it for three days.
And you have to have toilet.
Every year, and you have to have.
I don't, I didn't get that, I don't, the, the three days is more of someone coming to visit and, and park there and off they go to the next relative or whatever, so.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily wanna have to put in a R B hookup to my house to drain the sewer just as long as it comes in.
Yeah, and I, I almost wonder if the three days is too restrictive.
I do, I mean.
Because, uh, let's say you're building a new house, like, out where I live, where I've got two acres. And I was building a house and I had access to a camper that I could put on that two acres while the house is going up. You know, what, what is the, as long as I don't discharge a sewer, I can take it somewhere, discharge a sewer, bring it back, but I could still live on my own property.
Right, or you can do like I do when I come back from Brainerd and hire affordable porables. Clean it out for me.
So, you know, I think that three days may be a bit restrictive. I'll, I, I'll even take it a step further, since the, the chapter title is building regulations in construction, why is even the language with trailers is even in here?
Okay. So it just removes the general ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good, okay, that's a great observation. Okay, 'cause then that gets into the parking and the.
No, as far as the temporary thing, as long as we continue to have the big iron classic and festival in the park and things like that, you know, are there special circumstances that the on-street parking can be ignored? I, I'm not necessarily ignored, but it can be accepted.
Special event, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe.
Okay.
Personally, I just assume not see campers pulling up onto our boulevards and parking, which I saw last year.
Oh, really? Like, out of state, out of town, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, like, can't park on the street, so they just bulked up on the curve and parked on the boulevard.
Wow. Wow, okay. Okay?
The only, last comment I have for there was one fifty point three eight about the, uh, part A, about the sewer and toilet facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Says sewer water and toilet facilities available twenty-four hours on the premises where the automobile trailer is located or available within ten feet of the trailer on premises immediately. Joining the premises where the trailer is located? I don't know why we have ten feet, why isn't that a number or, or what if? And, and maybe this gets reworked and, you know.
Oh, right.
If you're in a park dedicated for that, you know, you're not gonna be ten feet from that, you're gonna have your own pot. Alright, just a, a couple more things, don't.
Oh, no, it's fine.
That's why, that's why we're doing this.
That's why we're here.
Bringing up good points.
So now into, uh, section on mobile homes, so one fifty one. So one fifty one oh one, the permit requires, uh, no mobile homes shall be installed until a mobile home installation permit's been obtained. I just changed A to an approved mobile home permit or.
Oh, okay.
Word that. And I may know it would be necessary. The same sentence in there for application fees is the same one like we had before about the blank forms.
Oh, yeah, exactly, you should plan that, yeah.
No, you can't get your permit until it's been approved.
Yeah.
Well, you mean an approved permit before you put it, before you install it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not just that you filed for one, but that you have it approved.
By this approved, right.
One fifty one oh three, part A and C, it talks about the city engineer or other building official.
Yeah, I, I struck out the city engineer, just to go with the building official, yeah.
Uh, same thing in one fifty one oh four, part B, city engineer or other building official.
Right.
Director of building official.
No, one fifty one oh four, I did, actually, I struck application fee on the first sentence of B because application fee is actually covered back in oh two. So I did strike that out there as a duplication.
And we may, I mean, this may be a side one, but that part for the penalty, that might be covered somewhere else in the ordinance for violation of any section of the ordinance that's, that's the engineer or other.
Yeah, it seems to be specifically spelled out at the end of each chapter. I can check with the attorney to see if it could be like the definitions and just apply overall. So it'd be, okay.
The only thing that I, that I kinda come across is the one fifty oh five, permits and fees. Does it matter if, like, in D, you know, something smaller, says a cash deposit, I think there's one other thing.
Oh, there is another thing about cash deposits.
Yeah, is it?
Yes, a deposit will be required, yeah.
These are necessarily requiring greenbacks.
I did mark that out somewhere else.
There's two in there, so.
Yeah, in the small building section, it says cash, and C, um, one fifty twenty-one C also says in cash, and I did strike that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll retype this and bring it next time so you can read through it and say, yep, that's the way we want to proceed with that. How big a chunk of the next section do you think you can digest?
Well, I, I've got a couple of things to add to it, so.
Oh, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just waiting my turn. In the, the one fifty oh three, uh, B, first sentence says, whenever in the opinion of the official, by reason of defective or illegal work, what exactly is illegal work? Does anybody know what illegal work?
Uh, performance and not by the required contractor, okay, alright.
So I think that needs to be defined.
Okay.
The work may be okay or may not be approved, but not necessarily illegal.
Okay.
But if you're, and I don't have an electrical license in the state of Minnesota, if you're doing electrical work, it's probably illegal.
Not on your own property.
Not on your own property, yeah.
Okay.
Other than, uh, public traffic, you know, if you had public traffic coming to your house.
Okay.
Yeah, I, the, all throughout this, it talks about reference to the city administrator.
Right.
I know that's the position, but I wonder if we shouldn't add or designate to it? Otherwise, there's an awful lot of burden put on you to, you know, to follow through with it, and so.
Okay.
I just think there ought to be some out on that.
Okay, okay.
Most of it we've already discussed.
Okay.
Um, I'm not, let's see, one fifty point oh five C, where we talk about mailings. I'm not sure that, communicating nowadays, communication by snail mail is the appropriate means to, to contact people?
Um, I, I think it does have, uh, still a legal, um, meaning in state statute because it has to do with service by mail.
But maybe it ought to say certified mail?
No, we don't have that certified.
No.
Well, you wanna make sure they get the notice, you don't wanna send this to some dead letter office.
But as long as, as long as you can prove that you mailed it to the address that you know that's there, whether they get it or not, is no longer a problem.
Yeah, but is that, is that right?
Because that's, it is by state statute that we still have to do, it's like all the, all the hearing notices have to go by mail to everyone, to the last known address, and.
And we certify what address we send it to.
We, yeah.
Yeah.
We do an affidavit of mailing and attach all the addresses, so we say this is the last known address that we have for anyone. I mean, certified mail, that's like six, seven dollars a letter anymore, to do a return receipt.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure that having some sort of a notice that, that I, was sent to me and I never got for one reason or another, whether the mailbox was left open and the wind blew it into the creek or whatever the case may be, whether that's appropriate. I, I just raised the, the question, you know, if, if the majority thinks that we ought to keep it as is, who's okay with it?
Well, I think we'd have to do the mailings.
Right, mm-hmm, right.
Whether you wanna do it by certified mail is your choice. All it requires us to do is mail it first class.
Since it's part of that demolition permit process, that part C, could we just include it in the fee for the demolition permit? For that certified letter, I mean, that's maybe six, seven bucks.
But this is if, I mean, we're mailing it because it's a vacant, unoccupied building deemed hazardous, but no one's coming in for a permit for it.
That's true.
Do you want me to just, I'll, we'll double check statutes and.
Somebody's still paying the taxes on it regardless, right, so.
Right, so that's where the last known address would come from, essentially would be from the tax authority, yeah.
Unless it's forefitted, unless it's full of the taxes. Sorry.
Those were my only additional ones.
Yeah, okay, alright, anybody else? Alright.
Breaking from a fire hose.
So chunks for next time, like, how big a chunk, was this about right? Like, those many sections we'll try to cover next time, or?
Is that good for you?
Okay.
You covered it better than anybody.
Let me ask this of Colin, how about if you, if anybody has an overabundance of whatever they wanna get out to everybody, is it, I mean, I can't scan and whatever, 'cause I don't know how, but it can, person, if they feel like they would like to get them all to us ahead of time, so can we briefly run over them and then when they?
Oh, you mean, get your changes in and then?
Yeah, I mean, is that something you gotta do or?
I think we, I think we would have to wait to discuss it until our meeting, till, 'cause it has to be a notice in the way. Um, but I can scan it and you can let Teresa.
Yeah, and then I could share it, sure.
And could be part of the packet.
But this isn't part of a public meeting, this?
Yes, yes, we're discussing that in a public meeting.
But I mean, it's not a posted public meeting where.
Yes.
You mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a public hearing?
A public hearing.
You, you don't, you don't wanna be having a.
It's not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting.
He, he was talking about a serial meeting.
Meeting, right, right.
Sending it out and then having.
Right, exactly.
It'd be an electronic form if you want to.
Yeah.
Be something like that, you know?
But if you sent it to Teresa or I, we include it in the packet and people wanna respond or they have time to read it, then we can do that.
Okay.
But sometimes it doesn't get the same interpretation. I'll just do it again the same way next month. Sounds good.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we spent, spent maybe thirty minutes on this, you know, we spent thirty minutes.
You, you spent longer than that on it.
Oh, did we?
Mm-hmm.
How much?
It, it's been almost an hour we've spent on this.
Oh, really? An hour on this, oh, okay.
Do we need the restricted amount or?
Do we need the tackle and that? Okay.
I'm still remembering the ten o'clock it is, so I.
Okay, this is painless, okay.
The last time we redid the whole building ordinance, it would be ten, eleven, twelve sometimes.
Alright, so we'll pick out a section, uh, Colin and I will identify the section.
Would you really need her involved?
And let you know which one it is.
Comprehensible?
Yes, so, um, so if the website's up, and that's the sheet that's in front of you, so it includes, there's a photo contest, uh, there's a survey, there's the calendar that kinda shows what the progress or process of the comp plan will be. That's, that's up on the website, so, um, lots of information. Oh, and a map sharing app that you get to, um, social point. So you can actually go to a map of Capson and then pick something that you wanna comment about. So, for example, the other day I did, like, Capson Aquatic Center is the coolest place in Capson or something, 'cause it was hot. So, you know, you can pick a space that you wanna make a comment on, and it doesn't have to be a positive comment. It could be a comment about something that could be improved or that you would like to see happen in that area as well. So there's four things that you can access right on the website. The next working group meeting will be July fifth, and then I'm working, um, with the school and the engineering firm to come up with a date either the last week of July or first week of August to have a community meeting. Um, this flyer is gonna go in a hundred and twenty-five bags that'll be handed out at the bike rodeo on Wednesday night. If you know of some other events, uh, I have a table tent that has little business cards that have the website information on the back, um, and another poster option too. So if you know of other community events where it would be good to get people, even just a little card to let them know what's going on.
Did H K, the consulting company, put this together?
They put this flyer together, yep, yep.
Did anybody review it before they printed it?
No, what did I miss? I did look at it, what did I miss? What did I miss?
Well, I just assumed, uh.
Oh, tell me.
They're in the public, uh.
No, tell me.
The arrow, to me, it looks like a phallic.
Oh, really? Oh, oh, that's interesting. The mayor and I both looked at that, and so did our attorney.
Oh, and I, I looked at it and I just, I. Oh, and I, I looked at it and I just decided, what the heck is that?
It's a rocket, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just does not look good.
Okay, well, I'll go back, we can go back.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's interesting, we did review that. The mayor looked at it, we looked at it, the engineering firm looked at it.
I didn't get it before.
We didn't see it before.
Yeah, the mayor doesn't have your imagination.
Nobody saw it before.
I didn't wanna go there and I didn't wanna make it part of a public comment, but I. I think if, if I think of it, there's gonna be others and it's just.
Interesting. Hmm, okay, I'll talk to those folks about it. Alright.
Sorry.
That's okay, I mean, it didn't even cross my mind. And I don't think anybody who was on the, in the web conference thought of it either, so.
That's the word for Disney.
Yeah, yeah.
Huh, interesting, okay.
Are you, which, which one are you talking about? I see she circled the little blue one.
The background one specifically.
That's why I was just mentioning I could circle the little blue one.
She's thinking small.
Well, that's where, hey, that's where. I mean, that's where it comes from, is exactly where we came from, the logo.
If the one in background is blue, it might not be as, you know what I mean? It might not have went there.
Or it had lines across it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So it's the large background one that caught your eye?
Well, yeah.
Not the, not necessarily the little rocket in the.
You need to make it more, look like a rocket.
And don't call it little rocket, because that's what my daughters call Charlie's little rocket. Sorry.
Okay, alright.
Any other business?
Alright.
Business?
Yes, one match only twice.
Okay.
Why didn't you do a finding of something?
Let me show you.
I was thinking for one. Okay.
Yeah, that's what it needs.
It needs the fins or something to make it more like a rocket.
Okay.